Hi.
Kristin?
Hi.
Martha?
Aye.
And Jim and both aye. Steve, would you take this until I can figure out my computer?
Yeah, I'll give it a shot.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the next order of business, the approval of the minutes of March thirteenth, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the March thirteenth, twenty twenty meeting. All those in favor?
Mr. Beal.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Sutman? Ms. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
And the chair will abstain because I missed that emergency meeting. So it's four zero one, Joe. And the next order of business is the approval of the minutes of the April fourteenth, twenty twenty meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved? Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the April fourteenth, twenty twenty meeting and discussion. Seeing none, we'll put that motion to a vote. Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. That that motion carries five zero zero. Uh, next item on our agenda is public participation. Uh, is there any public participation at this point in time? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the coronavirus update from the superintendent, Dr. Conti.
Um, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, oops. There's a um, a message to us all. Someone would like to say something. I'm assuming that's public participation. I have a Grace wanting to say something. Mr. Nelson?
Okay, fine. Let's go back to Grace. Grace?
Sorry, I was trying to tap in, but I couldn't get there quick enough for public participation.
No problem.
So thank you, thank you all. Um, my name is Grace Janusas. I'm in precinct four. Um, I'm a parent of children with special needs. I just wanted to make sure I brought your attention, um, that the needs of children with disabilities in the district are not currently getting the level of services that they need, which I know you, some of you have spoken about in previous meetings. Um, you know, today I speak broadly to protect my children's privacy, but also convey the same concerns that I've talked to other parents about in the district. Um, I just want to encourage you to look through, you know, if you look. Sorry?
Good, but go ahead, Grace. You have a thought.
Um, I just want to encourage you, you know, if you look at, you know, all the children in the district, their IEPs that they have, um, they've been given remote learning plans, which are really what the student's learning plan is, um, currently virtually. Uh, you know, current, we're talking to other parents. It's not unusual for children who are previously receiving twenty plus hours of special education services and therapies now have maybe less than one hour of FaceTime with an educator a week. Um, you know, having previously worked as a psychologist and team chair myself in school districts, I realize the complexity of the needs of children and the challenges of providing services to a wide range of students. Um, I know we all. In-person instruction, it's important for school committee members to be aware, um, that there's often a large discrepancy between what a child needs and what's currently being provided. These students require more than what they're getting, and when they return to school, there'll be an increased need in light of the budget passed last meeting and the V C B A special education teacher not being added to the staff. I just urge you to think creatively now, the plan about how these children will get what they need, uh, particularly when they return to the school buildings. I thank you for your time and your ongoing support of all students. Thanks.
All right, Mrs. Monaco is back, but I just want to say thank you to Grace for your comment, a huge concern of the school committee. And I just want to ask Dr. Conti if he has any comments or remarks.
Um, no, I don't necessarily at the time. I'm, we're trying to provide, um, all students what they need. Obviously, this isn't an ideal situation and, um, um, we will, um, we're doing our best to accommodate both our children with disabilities and our children who have, um, second language needs. Um, it's, it's just been a very difficult, uh, situation. I know special ed teachers are, um, working hard to provide specialized instruction. I think some of the, uh, direct services that, uh, Grace mentioned, um, Grace, I'm sorry for calling by your first name, um, I would say are, are very challenging to deliver remotely. So we're, we're aware of the situation. I think Mary Hood and her staff are, again, are doing, um, the best, best they can under trying times. And, um, uh, Mr. Nelson and the committee, I, there's just not an easy answer to this. It's not, it's certainly not for, um, a lack of desire to serve these kids well.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Conti. I think we share your thoughts. Uh, Chris, you're back and I can see you, so I'll turn the meeting back over to you. We're on, uh, the coronavirus update.
Um, okay, so on the, on the special needs thing, I just would like to add that I am acutely aware of what's going on there. Have more to say about it later. But my heart goes out to all the kids and parents who are not getting the services that they need and are used to. I know it's very difficult. We will do our best. Moving back to Eric now, if you could give us the update.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we are, um, into, uh, week eight. Um, I think I tried to, uh, provide the school committee with the summary on Friday. Um, we started, uh, phase three of our remote learning, which incorporates the most recent, um, state guidance. I'll have, um, Patrick talk about some of the specifics about that, uh, you know, in, in, um, in, in, in one minute. I think we are, um, also participating, um, in the state, uh, conversations. Um, the governor is running a, uh, task force, uh, focusing on reo- reopening parts of the state. And, um, there's a subgroup part of that that is run by the commissioner that is looking at, uh, reopening schools in the fall and some of what we might need to consider. So we're actively participating in those conversations. Um, and, um, we don't have, we have more questions than answers still at this time. But it's important to know that those questions, um, those questions are, um, coming and, and being, um, and being addressed. So the, uh, the remote learning part of the coronavirus, um, update, um, Patrick, I, I'm just going to mute and let you address some of the phase three work that's going on.
Hey, thank you. Um, uh, a ton has changed. The big change in focus, I think we alluded to it a little bit, um, at the last meeting. What we were expecting is that the Department of Education in their latest round of guidance has put out some prerequisite standards that are going to, um, help students prepare to move to the next grade level. So what we've done with those prerequisite standards, our coaches and our teachers have been working extremely hard. Um, we've broken these up into three two-week segments, um, because we basically have six weeks left starting this week. Um, and they're going to cover one-third of those prerequisite standards in each of those, um, two-week periods. So, um, really yeoman's work behind the scenes by the coaches, um, you know, Dr. Conti and I both got a chance to kind of witness that and be in conversations and support the collaborative efforts of our staff. But, um, especially at the elementary level, to see the, uh, the work that was done behind the scenes. Because again, no offense to anyone, everybody's working, um, equally hard, but the elementary teachers, I think, have a, um, a very significant lift compared to, um, you know, many others, they teach, they teach every subject. Um, so to cover the prerequisite standards at every subject that the state's outlining, um, I think is a significant, um, you know, thing to do it, you know, within a short week, short period of time to try to get that stuff together remotely is the key. And knowing they don't have as much time with their students as they normally would. So, um, cer- certainly kudos to tho- those folks. And could the middle school staff and the high school staff have been working equally hard. Um, and Mr. Sullivan and his department heads have, uh, been, you know, multiple times a week just to make sure they're on track. The other thing that's been a key for us, um, has been we've, we're outlining a plan which we're going to be forwarding with that. It kind of reinforces what we've already been doing, but we're formalizing just, uh, um, follow the guidance of the state and to make sure that students are staying engaged in the remote learning. I know, um, just to take a quick step back, we started out our first segment of time, we were just trying to make sure everybody was connected and able, um, to reach their teacher and, um, checking in on them and making sure that they could access something if we posted it. Um, the second stretch was with the choice boards going live and teachers were putting out lessons that are reinforcements of standards that had previously been covered. And now, starting this week, we're on to those prerequisite standards, which I mentioned earlier. So, uh, I mean, again, it's not perfect, but we're getting better and better. And we can share some work of, uh, some of the staff, I think, maybe at our next meeting. Um, Bob and I can work together to kind of show you. We're going to post some certainly on the website. But, um, the, the stuff the teachers are doing is stuff is, are things that they never dreamed of doing, um, when this year started. And to see, um, how quickly they adapt to, uh, this new situation i- is truly amazing. And again, reiterating that it's not what any of us want to do, and it's not anything like what they could accomplish in the classroom. But we really are making the best of the situation we're in. So, uh, with that, I do want to mention also that we had Teacher Appreciation Week last week, and, um, we've never been more appreciative to work with, uh, the teachers in Burlington as we are right now.
Thanks, Patrick. And again, I would, I would echo that as well, just the, uh, uh, the effort and growth and just, um, we all in our professional lives, if you can imagine, having the context of your professional life, uh, turned on its head and just having to adjust in real time. Um, uh, again, our educators have done phenomenally. Um, Madam Chair, um, the, the next part of this. Okay, um, Madam Chair, that the next part of the, this sort of update, um, I'm not sure these are going to be official votes of the committee because they don't involve policy. Um, but we wanted to talk about, um, some of the conversations we've had. We have two formal meetings with, um, with principals, uh, every week, and we're, um, bumping into some changes that we'd like to make. So I just want to get maybe, um, instead of an official vote, sort of just get the school committee's thoughts on some of these areas that we're, we've been discussing. So, um, uh, I'm just going to go down through the li- list and I'll invite any, um, any questions or comments and, and we can sort of speak to our thinking. So, um, the, um, summer school, uh, the planning for summer school is not something that happens, um, at the last minute. We're already in discussions and planning for summer school. We obviously have to provide extended school year services to some of our students with disability, as was mentioned, um, as part of their, um, I E P. We still don't know whether we, the buildings are going to be opened for summer or whether social distancing will still be a matter of practice. So I just wanted to, uh, in- inform the committee that for our extended school year services and our summer school, uh, the planning we're doing now is to do that remotely. So, um, and I think that's currently our only option. And if, uh, the governor opens up, um, schools on July one, it would be, um, not impossible, but it would be very challenging for us to, um, create a summer program, um, very quickly. So we are, we are posting the jobs, we are creating the experience remotely, both for our extended school year services. And we are in conversations about our enrichment summer school. Um, but we're, we're sort of debating, um, what that would look like if we're not allowed to have access to the building. So with that, I just, again, wanted to inform the committee that until we hear otherwise, our summer programming has to continue to be remote. And our summer central, our before and after school program that, uh, runs during the summer, um, again, without permission to access our buildings or to gather, uh, together, um, right now, I'm not sure how we can say that's going to run. So I just wanted to, uh, state that publicly. Um, and again, I had a conversation with Brendan at Park and Rec. Um, I'm not sure, um, Brendan is exploring whether, uh, they can, uh, run their programming. And I guess we're hoping in the next month that we'll find out, uh, what the rules will be this summer. But as of now, we have to plan, um, we have to plan especially for extended school year to be, to be remote.
Madam Chair? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, is that Martha?
Yes.
You want to speak?
Yeah, I, I had a couple of comments. Is that the right time?
Yes, that, I go ahead.
Um, you know, first of all, I want to appreciate that making plans for anything right now is so difficult. And, um, we don't know what the governor's going to say, and we don't know for sure what state, um, safety of our students and the health of our employees and all that is going to be in. Um, and so, I mean, July first isn't that far away in terms of planning for summer school, but it's now that we have to be doing the planning. And, um, I really want to just acknowledge how difficult it is because everything's up in the air, as it has been for the last two months in many ways. And, um, each time new information comes out, Dr. Conti and the staff have been wonderful at addressing as best they can the needs of our students and, um, I pleading, keeping it as safe as, as we can for our students. Um, I also support, uh, what you're suggesting, Dr. Conti, to have any summer programs be remote because we don't know yet what it would look like, if it's even an option to have it in the buildings. And, um, I'm sure we're planning even for September, will we be able to be back in the buildings? And I want to be sure that we put safety first as well. Um, so I support the remote learning summer school. I also acknowledge that remote learning is not ideal for so many of our students, and in particular for special needs. And so that's going to be difficult. I also know that you and Mary Hood and other districts are working to figure out the best way to meet the needs of our students with special needs. Um, I also lastly want to ask a question about E Y S summer programming. So typically, E Y S, which is extended school year, uh, provided for our students in special ed with I E Ps who, um, require summer programming, summer instruction in order to not regress. Um, but we're in a situation where basically every student in our district is likely to regress. I mean, there's summer regression that happens every year just from the regular summer break. Um, and so I would request that, in addition to the students who would typically get that extended year, school year summer programming, that there may be other students, and for example, as Grace earlier had mentioned and other parents, whose students maybe would not typically be eligible for extended school year. I, I'm hoping that we are looking at if some of those students who've missed out on services or instruction might be able to benefit from, uh, uh, an E Y S kind of program. Cause of how difficult it is to provide those services remotely. And of course, it would still be remote, but if there are, we are at least trying to figure out how to use that to, uh, meet some of the needs of our students with, um, relief. Thank you.
Okay, Eric, do you have a response to that?
No, I, I just, um, I did ask Mary Hood to be, um, part of the meeting tonight, so Mary is participating. So if anyone has, um, a specific question, um, Mary, Mary is here. I just wanted to, again, inform the committee that until we hear otherwise, we, we are planning to have, um, our extended school year programming, um, we're planning on that being, continuing our remote support of, uh, students who are entitled to the extended school year. So I, again, that's.
Okay.
That's sort of where we're at.
And is that, so my question's. I'm sorry, could I just do the follow-up? So my question specifically is, is, are we, is it likely that we'll be looking at expanding the eligibility of students, um, not the criteria, but the, the, this might not typically be eligible? Are we looking at that?
Um, uh, uh, again, I'll, I will pass that on to Mary. I don't know the answer to that. I think one of the things we are looking at is, um, that we've discussed is expanding the time, um, of the, of the program. So we typically run four weeks, but if we're doing remotely, we may be able to, um, e- expand the time. So, uh, again, I, I'm not sure of the eligibility question. Again, I'm, I'm not, I'm not believing they're changing the eligibility sort of criteria. Um, this was just, um, again, mostly to inform the committee, but also state publicly that, uh, we are planning, um, our summers to be, to continue with our remote learning through, through our summer obligation.
Okay, thanks.
Ma- Madam Chair, okay, go ahead.
Um, I wanted to ask, um, Mrs. Russo, did you have anything you wanted to say? Kristin?
Um, no, it's, it's just too bad they can't do this in person. We still need the remote learning. Um, but it's completely understandable. Thank you.
Okay, um, Tom or Steve or both, do you have anything you want to say?
I'm good.
I'm all set, Chris. I understand the limitations.
Okay, um, yeah, I keep hoping that, uh, there'll be, you know, some sort of change and, and so that some of the kids could have some sort of special program. So even though I know that's a dream and a eye in the sky, I would like to make sure we keep the door open to any, um, light at the end of the tunnel and, you know, not close the door on it, but say we're expecting not to be able to have in-person summer programs. Eric, do you want to go on to, um, some, uh, some other issue?
Yes.
Under, under this?
Um, we wanted to, again, inform the committee, or I wanted to inform, inform the committee that, um, um, it act, it makes no sense for us to issue, uh, end of year report cards at the preschool, elementary or, or middle level. Um, our plan is to, um, do a universal screener in the fall, which is, again, our typical practice. We would expand that into the middle school. So we would almost do, instead of a year-end report card, we would do a beginning of the year report card. Because we want to know, um, where all the kids are, and we would share that information with parents, um, at the start of the year as opposed to the end of the year. We just, we haven't had, uh, enough, um, uh, participation to make the report card a very valid, um, a very valid report. Um, we've been out of school, um, since March. And again, feel it would be more valuable both to the parent and to the, uh, child's teacher for us to get a good snapshot of where they are when we return to school in the fall. The high school will. I'm just sorry, the, the high school will issue a report card because, um, I think because they have to, and again, Mr. Sullivan's on the call if the committee has any questions about, um, the high school report card or the practice there.
Okay. Is that it?
I did for report cards.
Um, can I speak on that?
Yes, go ahead, Kristin.
Um, so I've been thinking about this and my only concern or, or thought or issue with this is in, in doing my own classroom right now, there are a number of students, granted, just a handful, but a number of students who are really putting in an effort, whether it's because their parents are doing it with them or they just are enjoying the learning. But when I've put comments on their Google Docs, they've gone back, they fixed them, um, they're putting in all the work. And, and I was just thinking about those students and the lack of acknowledgement, I guess, or the lack of recognition that would have come with the report card, even if it was credit, no credit. So I'm, I'm wondering if there's something that, that teachers could do or principals could do that would acknowledge those students who really have been putting the time in over this, this period to, to let them know that they had been recognized and, and, and their work. Well, I'm not talking about, you know, it, it has to be A level, but just more of the effort, acknowledgement for those students who have shown that, that effort, I guess.
Um, again, through the chair, Mrs. Russo, and again, I think I'll ask Patrick to jump in on this as well. My understanding is that teachers are giving basically daily feedback to students who are, uh, completing assignments, um, either using Google Classroom or using Seesaw. So I, I think they are trying to acknowledge work and encourage work. Um, um, and so it's not like the students are submitting something and not hearing from their teachers. In fact, I think that feedback is an important part of what they're, uh, of what they're doing. So, um, um, again, the, the challenge, the acknowledgement at the, at the end of the year, I, I sort of appreciate what you're saying. I'm just not sure how to do that in a, in a real valid way that, um, that would make sense and actually, um, help us, uh, with our fall planning. So that's, that's part of our challenge, I guess.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this? Okay, um, Eric, at what point in time can I bring up this out-of-district, uh, issue?
Um, two more.
All right.
Um, we wanted to also, um, we've been getting a lot of, uh, communication with families about, uh, celebrations and culminating activities. They tend to be focused on grade five, grade eight, and obviously our seniors. Um, so again, I did invite, uh, Mr. Sullivan, um, uh, on this call, so I wanted him to talk a little bit about what he's thinking about for, um, uh, for seniors and some of the options. And then, again, let the committee sort of weigh in if that's what they, they, I'm sure you're hearing from people as well. And then, um, we can talk about, uh, grade five and, and grade eight and sort of, um, what our thinking is. And, um, and, um, again, this is a part of what our, our, our planning is, is involving. Is, is, again, to Mrs. Russo's point, how to acknowledge and recognize, um, student work in a, in a difficult year. So, Mr. Sullivan, would you mind jumping in?
Not at all. Hello, everybody. Good to see everybody. Um, so I, I think like other people have said, um, it's an extremely challenging, uh, situation that we're facing. And there's not an easy answer on how to handle, um, the senior events that, that we typically have for our graduates. Um, I, I'm in weekly communication with, uh, local principals in the area. And it's not like anybody has figured out, uh, the magic answer on the right way to do this. Uh, but where they're falling into two camps, um, most seem to be holding, uh, a non-traditional, uh, ceremony during their regular date. Uh, a couple of local schools, I, I can think of Danvers, um, Westford have chosen to postpone. Uh, postponing just, it permanently just doesn't make sense to me because I think we automatically will lose if the kids won't be able to attend in August. Uh, and frankly, that's just not acceptable to me. Um, and so I, and I, I don't know why it has to be an and, uh, an and/or, uh, you either do it now or you postpone. Um, I'm proposing that we do both. Um, we have something non-traditional on June seventh. Um, you, you know, the two methods, uh, schools are choosing to do are either virtual or some sort of drive-up ceremony. Uh, we're opting to do a drive-up ceremony where, um, our student speakers can still be on the stage and give their speeches. Uh, we're going to organize families to drive up, uh, get out, uh, walk up with their parents across the stage, get their diploma, have a professional photo taken. Um, in- ensuring that there's proper so- proper social distancing and, uh, we, we priority of keeping everybody safe. Um, it's not what we want to do, uh, you know, the parents I've heard from, the kids I've heard from, it's not like I, I disagree with any of them that, uh, want to postpone. Um, so I've committed to holding the first weekend in August to do, if we're able to, another event. Um, and whoever can attend that is great, but, um, we always have kids that are on the military. We have kids that, um, move right after graduation, they go to college early, uh, get employment elsewhere. Um, so to permanently postpone and leave any kid out, I, I just don't think is a good solution. Uh, so my goal is to confer the diplomas on our traditional date. Um, I've been in contact with the post-graduation committee there. Um, they're also thinking about doing something later in the summer to have, like the kids have that experience, which is really enjoyable for them. Um, postponing till the summer might just add further disappointment down the road. Um, if we're in the same exact place we are now, not reasonable to have us out. Um, it's going to take seven, eight, nine hours for us to do this on the seventh. It's just not reasonable to have all my staff out on, um, varsity field in a hundred degree weather on that synthetic turf. Um, if there's other risks that get associated with that, uh, having people exposed to that kind of summer heat. Um, and so I, I think my, my thinking is, uh, I've hea- I've heard everybody that's reached out. Uh, again, I don't think any school has an answer that, um, you know, people have brought up how the state police could hold their event. And that's fine, but I don't know of any public school that is replicating, uh, that particular model. And if I did, I, I would steal it, the exact same thing. Um, where this is going to go, I mean, we make it, uh, better guidance. So, um, coming up on June seventh, things might be, uh, the restrictions might be eased. coming up on June 7th, things might be, uh, the restrictions might be eased, so we can certainly improve what we're doing on the 7th. Uh, or it might get worse. I, I, I think it's hard to predict, uh, what direction it's going, going to go in. But again, my, my basic thinking on this, um, you know, I know there's a lot of people, there was a petition going around, um, and, and I hear that, I don't disagree with it. But no, no answer is going to be representative of how everybody feels gathering, social way. Uh, either now or in August. I, I think there's just a lot of different feelings on it. Um, but my ultimate, um, rationale about wanting to do something on 7th is we know everybody's available, they've booked that date off in advance. Uh, and to be able to confer everybody's diploma on that date, I, I think is an important step that we should take. And then again, uh, in addition to August, uh, 1st, where we can do a formal ceremony if we're allowed to and have people gather, I'm okay doing a second graduation. Uh, we're also looking at organizing, um, some so, sort of homecoming event for the class 2020 in the fall. Uh, again, just to have them to be together, together as a class one more time. Because we fully acknowledge that all these events, um, were, were taken away for no fault of their own. And so if we can add things on at, at a later date, those kids that can come back and be together. I, I think that would be a, a, a nice situation. So again, I, I think that it's, um, it's hard, it's a challenging situation and, um, I wish I had a better answer to say that we had more options on things that we could do. Uh, but, uh, keeping the, uh, health and safety of everybody at our, um, in, in, at the first, uh, at the forefront of what we're doing. Uh, this drive-up process, I think is a way for us to still, um, give the kids, obviously not a preferred experience on their graduation day. But give them something, uh, and then if, if summertime permits, we will do something else.
So again, Madam Chair, I, I support this plan because I think it allows us to convey, convey our diplomas when, uh, students have earned them and we can reach all the kids. I think there's an August event, um, if things get relaxed or lifted for students who want to, uh, participate in something in August. And I think, um, the high school and Mark are even trying to do something above and beyond with, with, uh, with the fall event as well. So none of it's ideal, recognize that, but, uh, I just wanted to have Mark here to convey to the committee that a lot of thought is going into this. Um, we're communicating constantly with our other districts and we feel like we're providing, um, as many options for people as possible and there's, there's no way to please everyone, um, here. So we're, we're sort of doing what we can.
Okay, um, does anyone have any objection? It sounds to me like, uh, like Mark's doing the best he can. Um, if anyone has anything they want to say, speak up now.
I'd like to. Madam Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
I, I first of all want to appreciate the creativity that's gone into this commitment because doing a drive-up operation is a very long, drawn-out process. Hope out as much as you can for these students who are losing out on some really neat experiences, um, for their senior year. Um, I also think that it's important to do it on, on 7th and not as, because we could plan at some other time and we could end up in, in the second wave and everything would be shut down again and the second wave of the pandemic and we don't know what's going to happen. I hope that doesn't happen, but we, there's no guarantees for August or September either. So I support what you're doing. Um, the one request I would have is, is, you know, as you've obviously been working on it and communicating with people, but I, I re, this week spoke with a parent of a senior who didn't really even know what was going on. So to continue to communicate with families, obviously lots of families do know what's but to, it wants it finalized maybe to put out in another official and, um, sure that parents who aren't getting, you know, maybe immediate feedback from their, their child, maybe would get it more directly in some way. So thank you very much.
The plan is being shared publicly tomorrow. So we'll go to everybody tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you.
I was, I was waiting to talk to you all tonight.
Thank you, and thank you for your creativity because it sure is not an easy situation. And but as was said at the very beginning, none of us signed up for this and it's unfortunate. There are some people who are losing it and others, uh, it is real life. Thank you.
Okay, does, does any other member wish to comment on this? Okay, obviously not. Well, Mark, I think you're doing, uh, a good job trying to figure it out. We hope you'll keep us informed. I hope that, um, we can work together with parents to the point that somebody, uh, that, you know, some of the people at least are happy. I know everyone has a lot of different ideas. But if we can get most of the people even slightly happy, we'll be doing, uh, doing well. Thanks for all your effort and keep us in the loop, okay?
So, all right, um, Madam Chair, I guess I just wanted to again inform the committee that our official last day of school, unless things change at the state, is Friday, June 19th. Typically, the school committee votes on that. That is our 185th day, um, counting the days that we use during April break. So I'd like to, I'd like to propose again that the school committee vote on the last day of school being Friday, June 19th. And then we are also, um, again, I think I informed you, um, before. I'm not sure that you voted or if you have to vote. I'm just informing you again. And I just wanted to say we're planning on the last day of remote learning. Uh, sort of in the format that it is now to be Friday, June 12th. And then we're going to focus the last week on transition activities and try to prepare kids, um, for, um, for the fall, if we have any more information about what that's going to look like, because we don't think the fall is going to, um, look like, uh, schools regularly. And I think, uh, the students are going to miss out, miss their school, will stand goodbye. So we want to try to create some sort of, uh, activities that last week that focus on, on the school year ending and the transit. So, um, again, the last day for remote learning will be Friday, June 12th, and the last official day of school for this year will be Friday, June 19th.
Okay, I don't think we need to vote on that.
And then, Madam Chair, to, um, to your question, uh, of me during the week, um, paying for out-of-district, um, tuition. So we're, we're on that topic now. We have not paid our out-of-district tuitions, um, since, uh, since March. And there are, um, there are conflicting, um, recommendations, or I guess there's a conflicting recommendation from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I think the, um, I think the regulation is clear that, um, we can't pay for services that, uh, we're not receiving, if that's the interpretation of, of, of why we're not paying, um, the bills. Um, again, Mary is on the call to clarify any questions if the committee has it. And, um, I just want to commend, uh, Nicole Kasha. Nicole's been working with her, uh, counterparts. She's really been trying to get, um, some legislative clarity, uh, on this because we, we, we are getting conflicting uh, recommendations from the Department of Ed and, um, and from the existing, existing state law. So we're, we're sort of in, in a bind. But, uh, Mrs. Monaco, you asked me very explicitly, um, are we paying our out-of-district tuitions? And um, the answer to that is not since March. And, um, in polling my colleagues, it's probably about 50/50. So 50% of, um, the districts that I contacted are paying and about 50% um, aren't paying. So, um, that's the answer to your question.
All right, and I, I'd like to address it. And then if there are questions, we can bring Mary in. Um, so not paying the out-of-district placements, I understand that there is this uh, rule, law, regulation that says you don't pay for services not rendered. However, the reality is the out-of-district placements are doing the very same thing that we're doing. They're holding online classes to the extent that they can. Um, a couple of residences that I know have had to be closed because, um, because of the virus. However, they are reopening and they're beginning to fill up. And it leads us to a couple of problems. I think that we really should be paying. If something has worked out, then that would be great that we, you know, maybe get some sort of a credit at some point in time from the state. But what's going to happen? If we don't pay these bills, we're going to lose our spot. And I don't want to see our children who are in place, out of a placement out of a placement because we didn't pay the bill. And they, all these schools have long wait lists. So the minute we have a kid who's loses a placement because we don't pay, there'll be many people ready to rush in to take that place. And if I understand it correctly, there's another issue as well. And that is that there are going to be an awful lot of kids who need compensatory time after this mess has gone away. And based on the decisions that were made in Washington, it looks like we're going to owe that compensatory time at least to a point. If we pay our tuitions and we keep our spots, then the compensatory time, as I understand it, is a, a problem for the placement school, not for us. However, if kids lose their spots and they're back in the Burlington schools, then we'll have an enormous burden to pay all of this. So I would very much like to pay these. Is there, is there anyone else now who would like to add anything?
Uh, Chris?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I share, I share your concerns. I think it would be, uh, you know, devastating if we lost the slots uh, for the children that we have right now in these out-of-district placements. And it's kind of like Eric said, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place if there's some type of a state regulation that says we can't pay for services that aren't rendered. So we're getting pushed back from, from maybe the town on, on, on making these payments. By the same token, we can't, we can't afford to lose the slots. So I think that
Right.
we, we have to, maybe we have to work with our state reps and state senators that, that get an exemption to the requirement that you, you, you can't pay for services that aren't rendered, or that we, we, we get some type of legislation that says that these out-of-district placement agencies can't, um, take our, our students out of the, uh, the pipeline if they don't pay the tuitions when we're not allowed to do it. But I think that, um, I, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize or direct the superintendent uh, to take all necessary steps to legally pay these tuitions for these out-of-district placements through the end of, uh, FY 19. Uh, and to, um, just to make sure that we don't lose any slots. That would be my motion.
Great. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that for the, uh, discussion, Madam Chair, and I do have a follow-up. Go ahead.
Mr. Murphy, would you amend that to FY 20?
Sorry?
FY 20, I'm sorry, I'll amend the motion, FY 20.
FY 20, yes. Chris, I, I believe Eric said in his, um, in his comments that it's about a 50/50 split with other districts that he's been talking to. Um, we're all operating in Massachusetts. We all have the same laws and the same regulations. So there appears to be an ability to interpret things differently. And I see Darren sitting in his car down here, um, raising his hand. So I, I thought it might be worthwhile taking advantage of his presence tonight just to get some input on that issue.
Okay, I can't see him at all. Darren, are you there?
I, I'm there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, it's very nice to see everybody healthy and safe.
You done that, can you say?
My best wishes for continued health and safety to everyone in Burlington and, and, and all, and all of your, your families as well. So, I, you know, I, I think Tom was getting right to sort of the point I was going to make. There, there's this presumption i- in not paying if services are not being rendered. I spoke very briefly with Derek earlier today and, and hearing Christine's presentation. You know, it sounds like to me that we can take the position that we are receiving the services and if we're receiving the services, but not only can we're obligated. So I think when you're hearing the 50/50 split, it really depends on how you come down on that question. If you come down, if you're a district that doesn't believe you're receiving the services anymore, then legally you can't in convey those bills. However, if as a district you determine that you are still receiving the value of services, you certainly can legally make that payment. I think that's why you're seeing 50/50. I don't know if that helps at all, but just, um, there.
Yes, Darren, I, I think, you know, just like we can't provide the service as we'd like to provide, the out-of-district placements can't provide perfect services either. They're doing the very best that they can. And, um, I feel as though this may be worked out, but at, for the time being, I feel strongly that these bills should be paid.
Could I follow on, Madam Chair?
Yes, yes.
Um, ba- based on what Darren had said, and I believe I seconded Steve's motion. Sounds to me like it's, um, whichever side of this 50/50 split you come in on, um, it's a, there's a, a legal argument that can be made. So we're not breaking any laws by doing it one way versus the other. So I think it comes down to a policy decision on our behalf as to whether we want to continue to pay for the services. Um, and if you want to split hairs and say we're getting some benefit from that or not, that's the, that's a deciding line against whether we pay for it or not. But uh, I, uh, I'm not, I'm not sure there's a, um, the, the motion was to ask the, the superintendent to, um, explore legal ways in order to do it. From what I'm hearing, I believe there, there is a legal way to do it. That's by us making a finding that we are receiving a benefit and so therefore we're obligated to pay for that benefit. So I think it's more of an internal decision for us to make as opposed to an external one that comes down with, uh, somebody at the State House, um, passing a law or passing a regulation.
All right, Madam Chair, I would, if I could have the floor for a minute?
Yes, go ahead.
I would, uh, I, I would like to modify my prior motion, withdraw my prior motion and replace it with the following motion that we authorize indirect the superintendent to pay all of the out-of-district tuition, uh, placement bills through the end of FY 2020.
Your second?
I'll, I'll, I'll withdraw my original second and I will second that.
Okay, is there further discussion?
Yes, um.
I, I I do, I do have some discussion, Madam Chair.
All right, Tom, go ahead.
Like everybody who's spoken thus far, I'm certainly in favor of saving the spots and wanting to do that. This is a fairly large financial decision that we're making. However, I just want to make sure we've thought it through. I think, you know, it just came across our radar screen officially five minutes ago. I know there's been a little discussion, uh, behind the scenes, uh, leading up to this. But it, it's a, it's a good chunk of money and I think we just, I don't know how dire it is to make that decision tonight versus at our next meeting. If it doesn't make a di- difference one way or the other, I'd prefer to wait, have this on the agenda right at next meeting. A, to give all of us a chance to kind of think it through and also to give people opportunity to weigh in. So I would probably, um, support the motion. But I would prefer to wait and vote on it if we can do that.
Tom, I don't think it's a good idea to wait. I think that this has been going on since March and this is May. And it has been talked about behind the scenes. I thought it had already been taken care of and paid and I found out a couple of days ago that it had been. I do think that when the state comes around to figuring this out, that, you know, if there's money to come back, what it'd be applied for its next year tuitions, I think it will all work out the same way for all of the towns unless of course you don't pay, in which case you may lose your spot. So I would be very reluctant to wait beyond tonight.
Has there been, has there been any discussions? I know with the bus company, there was a lot of going back and forth, Nicole and Bob, by, you know, talking about somewhere between zero and a hundred percent of the bill. Um, has there any been, been any discussions with any of these schools to pay a percentage of the, um, of the tuition?
Yep. Uh, through, through the chair, I was, I was just going to say exactly that. I know what the Mass Association of School Committees is re- recommending is that you do do an analysis of services you're receiving. And if you feel that you're receiving 80% of the services or whatever it is, try to negotiate agreement with the provider. Similar to the bus situation. So it certainly is an option to take a look, make a, you know, an evaluation of you're receiving 100% and pay 100% if you if you feel it's more eighty or ninety percent, try to negotiate a agreement.
Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to make sure that, um, Nicole and Mary weigh in because part of, um, part of the argument that Nicole is making is, is the, the tuition rates are set by the state as well. So I think, um, we're trying to have that conversation, but we're doing that. And I just wanted to stress a, a, as well, um, this conversation came about because of a factual, um, request, a, a request for information from, um, from Mrs. Monaco. Um, I actually, I actually think in this particular case, um, both sides are right. And that's what makes this difficult. I think we're right, or the committee is right, we want these bills paid. I also think that the, um, uh, the town is right to, to, to question these bills. So, um, Nicole, it, it, Nicole, I just want to make sure that, um, um, I think my understanding, and if it's wrong, I, I appreciate that it's wrong, is the, um, can, can we negotiate, uh, tuition rates? Or aren't those set, um, outside of, uh, an individual negotiation?
So, um, the OSD, the Operational Service Division, um, sets the rates for, through special education schools, um, every year. So, um, I mean, even negotiating with, you know, one bus company is, um, a large undertaking for, to have to do that, you know, even, um, with fifty schools would be, uh, I guess, sort of impossible. And, um, it's the OSD's regulatory authority to set those rates. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure that, that that's possible for us to negotiate our own. Um, and I think that one of like the major concerns around this is, um, that we're just looking for OSD, um, you know, to invoke that regulatory authority that they have to review the rates that they have approved. Um, because some of these schools that, um, as part of their pri- price authorization process, at the expenses that they submitted, they're not incurring now. Um, so we just, we just want to make sure that, um, you know, obviously we don't want students to lose their spots in any of these placements. But, uh, at the same time, you know, we don't, we don't want to be paying, um, twenty-five grand for a residential placement if the student's only receiving one hour a week of services. Um, that, that's just an example. I'm not saying that that's happening here.
Um. Mary, yeah, could we have Mary weigh in?
Yes.
Yes, I think, um, we do have information from every school regarding what they are doing for remote learning. Um, they submit those to either a team chairperson or myself, um, often weekly. Some, um, one remote plan and they're following the same thing. Others update it and change it. Um, the schools are actively communicating with the district. I myself personally have attended four IEP meetings without a district schools in the past couple of weeks. Um, and I have more through the month of May and June. So they are staying, um, helping us be compliant with timelines. They are working closely with students. Um, but the OSD rates are at this point non-negotiable according to the Department of Ed and OSD. They are however reimbursable under circuit breaker, depending on what that money looks like.
But only if we pay them, right?
Right.
Um, I think Tom. Is that Martha?
Martha, um, yes, yes. So in addition to all the reasons why we should, I would support paying tuitions for schools, for our special ed students who are out of district, I also have a concern, not only would we possibly lose a, an individual slot, but some of these schools could pose, um, to other funding sources, uh, basically. Um, so that's just on top of all the reasons that, that Chris, that you gave.
Right.
And I, you know, kind of like the idea of negotiating with a school if, for the things that they're not having to provide. But I don't know, I mean, Darren, um, i- is that something that other districts are doing? Are they actually negotiating with the schools? And it seems like, as Nicole mentioned, just really overwhelming to have to negotiate with every single school because if what we're hearing from Mary Hood is that these schools are all engaged with our families, that's what we've asked our teachers to do. Be engaged with their students in any ways that they can, provide the services if they can. I would like us to continue to pay for those, um, schools and pay those schools so that they are there when we need them. And, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we could go through several rounds of this coronavirus before we get it back and, and things are back to what we used to call normal, if there ever is such a thing. Um, and what I'm hearing from our director of special ed, from Mary, is that these schools are doing everything that they can. Um, I also, if the, when the conversation is done, I'd like to rethink how the motion is worded, but I don't need to get into that now.
Okay, um, so Kristin, do you have anything to add?
I just want to clarify. So if we were to pay, um, move forward paying this, we would also back pay, um, April also is one question. And then the second question is, I heard that the town is not wanting to pay. So is there an issue that Nicole writes the check, but then the town doesn't approve it? I just, I'm curious about that flow.
Eric, can you address that?
Well, again, it would, it would, we would, uh, have it paid through the, uh, warrant process, Mrs. Russo. So, uh, the, the town, um, the assistant town manager would, would have, again, final approval. And, and I believe he is, he is following the regulation and, and he is doing it, uh, uh, correctly from his perspective. I think, um, if I'm being directed or soon to be directed, I will go and have a conversation, uh, with town and, and move forward. And we'll continue the conversations that we're having, uh, with the state as well. So again, I, I, I think, um, I think if it's about proving that the work is being done, then, um, I think that, uh, we might have to put some time into, uh, demonstrating that. But I think, Mary, you have the remote learning plans from every school. Um, and I think we just need to, um, we'll need to put that work, uh, together. As I said, I think both sides of this conversation have merit. Both are right. And I think we're just trying to navigate this, um, in, in a way that's, uh, that's good for kids. So, um, that, that, that's kind of where we're at. Mrs. Russo, your first question was?
Um, back pay.
Um, we would, we would go back to the closure. So we would go back to, um, uh, March thirteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, can I make one more, one more comment?
Yes, Tom, go ahead.
Um, actually, one question and one comment. As I've been listening, negotiating obviously is not a reasonable, um, option here. I guess the question would be, um, if we were to make a good faith unilateral partial payment based on our analysis of our percentage, would that be, would that be good enough to hold our spot going forward? The additional money, we could hold an escrow, see how the whole thing plays out. I mean, the one thing that we all have to remember here, at least in my opinion, this money has all been budgeted for this purpose. So it's not as though this is costing, costing us extra money. This is money that's in the budget to pay for these services. So, um, obviously nobody wants to spend money that they don't have to if they're not getting something in return for it. Um, but this is not, um, this is not creating a financial hole in this year's budget. This is money that's budgeted for this purpose. But I just wonder if we could, if we feel we're getting seventy-five percent of the services, make seventy-five percent payment, we could hold the other twenty-five percent in abeyance, um, see how it all plays out with, with all of the different variables that are going to come forward. Turns out that we have to pay it to them at the end. We have it available to do that, uh, then we, then it goes back to the general.
Tom, my belief is that this is, Burlington is not the only town involved in this. It's every town. And I believe that whatever is worked out will be worked out statewide for out of district placements.
Right, but we don't know when that's going to happen.
No, we don't. But when it happens, if there is any money coming back, it would either be actual money coming back or credit supplied for future tuition. And, um, I am of the opinion that, as you said, it's budgeted. And the schools are doing their very best to provide services, um, just like we are. And nothing's perfect. But, you know, they're doing the same things that we're doing and we're paying our people. And these schools have to pay theirs. Like Martha said, you don't want them to go out of business. And you also don't want to lose your spot. And, and I don't know if I made it very clear, but the decisions in Washington that affect compensatory time are going to be billions and millions of dollars worth of education. And I think we are much better off having paid up tuition, have the kids in the programs, and then the compensatory time is dealt with via through the IEPs. As Mary mentioned, you know, the IEPs are all being held. So I, I think we should just pay it, but that's my, if anyone else wants to speak, now is the time and then we're going to take a vote.
Chris, I just have one quick question.
Yep.
Another question for Mary. Um, Mary, what, what do we do if we have children who lose their slots in these out of district programs? Where do they go?
Well, that's a problem because usually most of our students who are out of district, there is a reason that they're not in the public school setting. So for a lot of them, it would be a safety issue and we would be frantically trying to find a spot. And there's long wait lists at a lot of the private schools, not all, but a lot of them. So some of our most high-risk students, um, it would be truly a safety issue. Um, and we wouldn't have a safe place to put them, um, and even move forward with educating them. So it would be a crisis. Um, and to speak to what Chris just said, I think that the financial ramifications for that would be huge. I, 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 trying to find a placement and then com- compensatory for not having a placement for a child, um, would be extensive.
Thank you. Mary, if I, one more comment, Chris?
Yep.
I, I just, I just don't think it's worth the risk not to pay these tuition. Uh, we're getting circuit breaker money over, over a foundation amount from the state if we pay them. So the state is contributing towards, uh, these tuition payments that I hope we're going to authorize, uh, the superintendent to, to move forward on. And if we don't make these tuition payments, the, the cost could be ten times what we're talking about. So I just don't think it's prudent not to do this, not to make these payments.
I, I agree. I, I understand Beth Colburn would like to speak.
Yes.
Go ahead, Beth.
If you're muted.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Beth Colburn here. I have a child at Pine Glen and a child at the BECC. I just wanted to comment on the out of district topic. Um, I want to state that I believe the town is incorrect in their interpretation that the out of district schools are not providing services. Um, as Martha reiterated, we're not partially paying Burlington teachers to provide remote learning. Um, I don't think we should be partially paying, um, out of district, um, um, schools for providing remote services. And I think the risk of not paying them outweighs the cost. Um, these students cannot be taught in our district. We have sent them somewhere else to be taught and we need to pay them for teaching them in their specialized way. And we need to accept that to not educate those students, if we choose not to pay the bill and they choose to then, um, kick the students out of the school, um, would be a detriment to their livelihood. And that is more important than how much can we save if we lowball, um, an out of district school. Period.
That's correct. Okay, um, I'm going to take the vote unless, I can't see everybody because the connection is so bad.
Christine, Christine, can I just clarify one thing?
Darren has a comment?
Go ahead, yep, Darren.
Okay, then, then I, I think Martha, maybe somebody else asked. But I just want to be clear, the, the state set the rate. And we're not talking about renegotiating the rate. Always, all I was saying is that if there are services that you feel are not being provided, that is something you could, you could try to negotiate. Not the, this isn't the initial rate set by the state. It's if, 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 if you feel that their service is not being provided, that's where you can try to negotiate down. Like for instance, lunches, I don't know if lunches are in the cost. They're not buying the food and there's the labor cost for that. That might be something that you try to, um, negotiate down. But that doesn't mean you have to either. If you feel you're, you're receiving the full services, in my opinion, you have the legal right and obligation.
Chris, I'd like to speak. This is Martha.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I, after, especially including after hearing Mary speak, I, I feel that it is important that we, uh, continue to pay these tuitions. And I do trust Eric that you can speak with the people at the town to explain that we are, it's not accurate to say we are not receiving services for these costs. And it's also accurate to say all the educational that we've, we've heard tonight. I also want to point out that John Eiler was hoping to make a comment.
Okay, John Eiler, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Martha. Uh, yeah, just a couple of things. Um, I, I think, uh, I understand the issue of losing spots. That's, that'd be pretty bad, obviously. Uh, I'm wondering if there's two, uh, things that could be done. One would be to at least talk to the schools, uh, that have, uh, what are called low hanging fruit. If there's residential programs where people are sent home, uh, I think it would be difficult to argue we're getting a hundred percent of services there. Uh, unless they've done some amazing substitute program, that it seems prob- So it seems like at a minimum, we could at least ask them about that and s- ask them, what do you think are your actual costs that would be fair to reimburse? That, you know, they, they might actually be honest and say, look, you know, we're, we're, we're not spending nearly as much. You know, here's a good amount to reimburse. Let's at least ask a question, fairly confidently pay and don't ask a question. Uh, and then I would suggest if you, if you do vote to pay, uh, that there should at least be an act item for someone to, uh, speak immediately with, uh, Captain Gordon, uh, and ask for some legislative relief. Uh, that would be appropriate in terms of, uh, of what rates could actually be charged by these schools, uh, so that we wouldn't lose the slot, but there would be the opportunity to, uh, to gain a credit or, or reimburse for some expenses for things that, you know, clearly didn't happen. You know, we understand that, you know, obviously things are happening in a reduced fashion. But, uh, you know, again, thanks, I'd rest, I'm just not, and so it's pretty hard to argue we're getting those services. I would think that there should be some way we're plannably to get it just done there. Again, if we don't, if we don't ask, uh, I'm fairly confident we won't.
So John, I believe that an awful lot of what you just asked for is already in the works. Um, Ken Gordon is already involved. There's a lot of activity going on at the state level. So that's why I feel as confident as I do that if we pay the bill and if something can be worked out, it would be a credit or a reimbursement. My concern is getting it done and then continuing to work on it, not just to walk away. You deal with that?
Yep, that, that sounds great, as long as you don't drop the ball.
Yeah, the, can you deal with it was asking Frank. Um, okay, so thank you for all your input. I would like to take the vote. It's, um, obviously a roll call vote.
I'd like to request we have the motion read again slowly because I want to know what it is I'm actually voting on.
Yes. Darren, would you read the motion, please? Was that a no? You want Steve to do it again?
I believe, Madam Chair, my, my second motion was to authorize and direct the superintendent to pay the tuitions for all Burlington out of district placements through the end of FY twenty twenty.
Okay, and Tom seconded it. All right, Martha, that's what you're voting on.
So a question for Dr. Conti. Does this feel appropriately directive to you? Or is there some other way that you might find more helpful to you in your efforts to make this go forward at the town level that would help, be helpful to you in the wording of the motion?
I'm not sure the committee could be any more, um, any more direct. So I, I, I get the message and, um, I will, um, work with the town. And, and again, as I said, I, I think everyone is trying to do the right thing and we'll try to, um, I, I will, I will follow- I, I will, I will follow the direction of the committee.
Thank you.
Point of interest, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, the motion, as I understand it, was to direct the superintendent to pay out of district uh, balance of fiscal year 2020. From some of the previous comments, it sounds like there might be somebody at Town Hall who potentially has veto power over that. So I wonder if, I can't, we can't direct him to do something that he might not be able to do, so.
Well, he can let us know if that's the problem.
Right. Um, on, speaking on the motion, um, I have some concerns, but if I'm gonna air, I'm gonna air on the side of saving the spots. Um, but I'm doing that based on the chair's understanding that there's um, ongoing discussions and movement towards potentially either reimbursing or, and or crediting future services once all this stuff settles here. I don't particularly care to spend money on things we're not getting, but to me, that's, that's a minor risk compared to possibly losing spots for kids who need those services.
Well, I thi- I think, Tom, that we are getting the services. I mean, they may not be as, as great as we want them to be when kids are actually in the programs, but.
Yeah, but, but, but I mean, to, to John's point about residential ser- uh,
Right.
where people aren't living there. I mean.
Right. Well, yeah, those houses though are, some of them are, are opened back up. It doesn't mean every kid has gone back. You've got.
No, I know, I understand. I'm just saying, there's got, there are some situations where we're not getting the same percentage of services as we are in other situations. I'm willing, I'm willing and agreeable to airing on the side of caution.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm doing it based on my understanding that there's going to be some potential adjustments later on down the road that we will still be able to take advantage of, even if we've already paid the bill in full. It's always been a difference.
Believe that should be the case.
For the money than you chasing them for the refund.
Right. Um, Eric, can you just make sure that um, you keep us informed of those ongoing negotiations?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Let's put this motion to a vote. Mrs. Simon?
Aye.
Mrs. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Christine Monaco votes aye. That's five zero zero.
All right. So uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, it's um, it's almost eight thirty. I want to um, look at the rest of the uh, agenda. We have some folks here um, as guests. So if I could jump around a bit in the agenda, and I think we also have some people here for the monthly financial update. So um, if I could just start with the monthly financial update. Bob, if you could post that? And Matt, then we'll do transportation. So we're getting right to you. So the monthly uh, financial update, um, again, the first page is the uh, revolving account. I think that um, obviously the one that is going to um, uh, grab everyone's attention right away is the uh, the school lunch account. Our commitment is to close that out prior to the um, the start of the next fiscal year, um, without collecting revenues for um, for school lunches and continuing to pay uh, cafeteria, cafeteria staff. It should be no surprise that that account is running um, a larger debt than normal. So that's the revolving accounts, the first page. Bob, could you move to the next page? Again, and Bob, just go to the bottom of the following page, just bottom line for me. Um, again, I want to thank Nicole and her staff. So um, um, it looks like we are um, uh, projecting again at this point, uh, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in terms of the operating budget. Our last payrolls again are projected out. We still potentially have some unexpected costs. So um, again, while I'm, I'm happy that is obviously not a negative number, um, we're still pretty cautious about um, expenses that we uh, we may be incurring. And then Bob, I'll take questions after, or Nicole will take questions after. The last page is the um, accommodated account. And um, I'm not sure, again, the question I would have for Nicole, if um, this page um, details uh, the tuition's not being paid, or did we continue to um, budget as if, if we were paying the tuition? So Nicole, that would be a question that I have.
So uh, this accounts for um, all tuitions for all, all placements.
As, as if we were paying?
Correct.
Okay. So again, the balance shows that we can um, pay those tuitions uh, through the end of the fiscal year as, as Mr. Nelson commented. So again, those are the, those are the financials. And again, we'll try to answer questions if um, Madam Chair now.
May I ask a question, Chris? Kristen?
Yes, go ahead. Um, I have a squinch to my eye.
Oh, there you are.
Yeah, here I am.
Um, so is there, I guess for Nicole, are there areas in which we might be saving some money? Um, utilities, for example. I've heard somebody ask about that. But do we have a sec contract with utilities and no matter what, we pay a certain amount? Or are there areas in this budget that are, you know, fluctuating at this point?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so there, utilities is, we get billed based on our usage, um, so there might be some savings there. Um, I have begun to sort of analyze, um, you know, places where we'll have some savings, but then, you know, we'll also have some other areas um, uh, that will have increased costs um, due to all this. So um, such as, I don't know, our legal costs are probably going to be more. Um, but this, this doesn't, um, I.
All right, thank you. But um, I, I know there are two audience questions. Does anyone else on the video have anything to ask? Okay, um, can we go to Ways and Beans, Dr. Eiler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, it, so my questions are along the lines of what uh, Chris was saying. Uh, I, I guess, uh, first off, on the school uh, lunch program, just take order. Uh, this says that the re- reimbursements haven't happened since January, which was through last month also. Is that, is that accurate that they've just stopped reimbursing?
Is Nicole there?
But yeah, sorry, um, I, I got kicked out. Um, could you hear me to respond, please?
Yeah, uh, yeah, th- this, this uh, revolving budget, uh, or summary had the same, has the same note as last. I just wanted to know if that's accurate, that they still haven't reimbursed uh, since January?
Uh, so the, the revenues were a little bit lagging. Um, I'm, I'm sure the state was dealing with lots of issues and everything. Um, we have received them, um, but it was after four thirty, so I do have those revenues in now. Uh, it was about forty-two thousand that we received.
Okay, all right, good. All right, so it, they haven't cut us off completely. That's encouraging. Uh, and then uh, as uh, Crystal was raising it, I would have imagined at least substitutes would have been zero budgeted out for the year since I'm assuming that there's no substitute teachers happening.
Uh, we still do have um, some um, like maternity leaves and whatnot that are being covered by substitute.
Okay, but it, at least as the budget stands right now, it looks like it's a, assuming a full substitute budget. It, it seems to be suggesting we're not saving anything on substitute. Seems hard to imagine.
Uh, Nicole, is it, it's not daily subs? These are, these are regular salaried people, right, that, that work every day ordinarily?
Uh, so we have a little bit of both. We have um, we have daily subs. We have um, long-term substitutes that may be covering a leave of absence, a maternity leave. Um, and then we also have permanent um, building-based substitute.
Okay, well, can you address whether or not for people that are daily subs, I called this morning, they're not getting paid, are they?
No.
Right, so shouldn't that kind of thing be showing up as a savings?
That's John's question.
Uh, so like I said before, I, I might have gotten cut off and you didn't hear this part, um, but so I've been doing some analysis about, you know, places where we'll be saving and um, other places where, where we will be spending more. Um, that, um, as of four thirty, um, this statement doesn't reflect um, that analysis.
Okay, so it, it sounds like there, it, you haven't had a chance to go through it then, which, which is fine. Uh, and you know, along the same lines, I'm imagining that, you know, presumably there'd be somewhat less maintenance going into the building than there, you know, less in-class tutors and, like, you know, there's a, a number of obvious areas of things that aren't happening that presumably there would at least be some savings.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, all right. So we, we should look for that next month, perhaps?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, Eileen wanted to, wanted to uh, ask a question.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Okay. So Eileen Secular, town meeting member, please sign forth. So um, essentially, yeah, I mean, I, I looked at this and I guess I, you know, the, pretty much what John has said. There are a number of line items that I expected to um, to, to have a, a big undersp- and, um, you know, tutor, substitute, maintenance. I mean, I'm not sure how, a lot of these, I don't see page two. Um, uh, can go down page. I mean, a lot of these line items, um, that have to be favorably affected by, you know, by the shutdown. But um, Nicole's gonna do an update and what, in the next school meeting, uh, do you think, Nicole? This will be updated then, or, you know, a better estimate of, of what we're gonna save?
For the next monthly financial report.
Yeah. Oh, so that'll be sometime in June, that, so, so.
The first, the first meeting of the month.
Yeah, in June. Okay, that's all that, right. Um, so to, to get to this out of placement, um, out of district placement, is that the five or six million that I see on the accommodated? Is that the line item we're talking about? Five point nine?
Nicole? Yes, uh, line seventy-four tuition.
How much? Yeah, yeah. So can, can you quantify that? That, that, in other words, you know, the, the fees for, I guess we're talking April, May, and June? What you guys just voted on to pay? How much is that? Is that quarter of that?
We get billed, we get billed monthly for those services.
Okay, so is that about twenty? So what I'm getting at, is it twenty-five percent or twenty percent of that six million?
Uh, I, I don't have those figures um, in front of me right now.
Okay, so, but, okay. So it's a, it's a very large number regardless. It's a very big number for, for fees that we're, that we're using as a placeholder. Um.
Yeah, these, Miss Secular, these tuitions are expensive, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, I, no, I understand. I just wanted to get, I just want to quantify that, that last motion that you guys made. So um, that's all the questions I had really. I mean, like I said, I just expected a number of line items to have favorable um, variances, but I'll see those.
Eileen, I think, you know, when this all comes out, yeah, uh, we'll probably see some savings in some places. But keep in mind that we are, we're paying people. We may not be buying pencils up there. We're paying salaries.
Oh, no, I agree. No, but hopefully we're not paying, you know, the tutors that we normally would have, as John said, the substitutes and stuff, so.
So, well, the tutors, the tutors that generally um, special education and they, they still work and they still get paid. It's um, it, the only one I can think of off the top of my head quickly is uh, daily subs that, that will make a hundred bucks a day. We don't need daily subs, except some of the parents go like. So it'll be interesting to see if we, if there is considerable savings, but still there'll be some, I just don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I do wanted to move with your permission to the transportation services update. We have, we have Matt here from uh, Culpeperian Page. Obviously Nicole has been doing uh, the majority of the work. I think that um, since our last school committee meeting, we have gone back and tried to um, renegotiate uh, with Tromley down to seventy-eight percent, which the school committee was not in favor of us paying. Um, again, Matt is here, but my understanding is there's been very little movement by the uh, company or very little interest in uh, changing that amount. Um, I think he felt like that a percentage was negotiated across multiple districts and that if he were to lower the price or lower the cost for Burlington, he would have to lower the price then for um, all of the other districts. So I think what's before the committee tonight, and Matt, please correct me if I'm wrong, is um, we either need to um, utilize our contract and begin to lower the number of routes that we are using to um, reduce the amount of the contract itself. Or um, the committee can vote to have us pay the seventy-eight percent. Or the committee can continue to not support the payment of the seventy-eight percent. In which case, I think the worst case scenario would be uh, we would uh, not have a bus company and we'd have to go out to bid if we needed buses for next fall. So Matt, is, is that a, an accurate summary?
I, I would agree with that, Dr. Conti.
So again, Madam Chair, I think the conversation with the uh, with the committee would be where, where at seventy-eight percent, we either can pay or we take the number of routes and I think we can reduce by a percentage. Um, um, by their contract, if that's one of the things the committee would like to do. Or again, if the seventy-eight percent is um, not acceptable to the committee, then um, then we probably need to move in a different direction. But again, just want to say for the committee, please be aware that we didn't have a whole lot of bidders the last time. I'm not sure what the bidding climate would be. So um, um, we could go out to bid. Um, this could be the only company that bids and we could end up paying more for our transportation contract as well. Is that uh, so there, there, it's not without uh, some consequence um, either to have us do this?
No, I would agree with that as well. There is a risk.
Could, could someone explain more this, what you mean by you could reduce our routes? It, it, does that mean that if we say we only want twenty routes instead of thirty routes, then we pay seventy-eight percent of those twenty routes? Or, and, but what does that mean for if we end up going in the fall and et cetera? So could someone explain that option, please? I, I'm sort of getting rid of this company and putting it out to bid at this point in community.
Sure. I'm happy to answer. Yeah, I'm happy to answer that question uh, through you, to the members. I wanted to um, you know, again, restate what I said at the last meeting. The contract does afford the district the ability to reduce or eliminate routes. If you do so under the contract terms, specifically it's part of the specifications which are rolled into the contract, which they, when they supplied their bid, they relied upon. It allows the district with thirty days' notice to do so, during which time the district is obligated to pay twenty percent of the costs during that thirty-day period. And the contract, after such thirty-day period, would be amended accordingly to reflect the amount of the cost associated with the reduction.
If I could throw in a comment to clarify, uh, just my, my reading of contract, uh, is that the, we can increase or decrease routes by twenty-five percent as per the contract. Uh, and then that would have the effect at the, so we can't up the routes to zero, for instance, if someone is thinking of doing.
On the other hand, we are um, we really. On the other hand, we are um, we really, if we go back to split something, we need all the routes. So what's the realist, if I understand it correctly, we either pay the seventy-eight percent or we don't pay, run the risk of having to creep that up us, correct, does that sum it up?
No, we, we can absolutely reduce the, the routes by twenty-five percent and then raise them back up next year. So we should be able to get that twenty-five percent reduction with zero risk as my read.
Uh, Madam Chair, could I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
This has to do with, uh, aside from adjusting it as John just spoke to, um, is it as easy as not paying them and going back out to bid, or do we have exposure legally for them to, to want to breach a contract? So that we could wind up paying them damages in addition to going out, uh, going out to bid again? Exposure there?
That's, that's the counsel. Yeah, I, I guess I would, uh, through you, Madam Chair, to the members, I, in response to that question, I would say that, you know, there's always a risk of litigation or a contract, um, but having said that, I think that the, the town has the authority that I, and I guess John has alluded to, which is you do have the ability to reduce routes at a reduced rate for a period of thirty days, at which time the contract would reflect that reduction or elimination of routes. Um, again, as I've said last time, I think there's an opportunity here to work toward a resolution, to the extent the committee is willing to ensure continuity of contract. There's nothing that, I think that prohibits the committee from entering into a temporary arrangement whereby the, the parties could agree to cover certain out-of-pocket costs exclusive of labor. Not that, that has to be the case, that's again, a decision on the committee's part, uh, to ensure continuity and readiness of services, which is consistent with law.
Although it sound, it sounds if I heard the, beginning the presentation correctly from the poll, then I'd interested in discussing anything below the seventy-eight percent that's on, that's on the table.
And my understanding is based on the uh, MOU or MOA, as it's called, that has been negotiated to date, that uh, MRT Trombley would honor any um, value that would be, you know, whatever the lowest deal is in any community would be, they would honor that in every other, so there is language in the MOA to that effect. So to the extent that, let's say we agree for a different number and they agree with that, everybody enjoys that reduction. If someone else were to come out, if we said we agreed to the seventy-eight percent value, uh, down the road in another district or community agrees to, let's just, to say the argument, say sixty percent, then we would enjoy the sixty percent, the way it's currently drafted.
But that, but that clot, that clause seems to be the reason why Trombley's just holding out seventy-eight percent with everybody, because I know if they give with one, they're gonna be giving with everybody. So it, it puts us back to it, it seems to me we have the option of either paying the seventy-eight percent, reducing it by twenty-five percent under the route reduction clause and then readjusting it later. But my question is, if we say screw it, just, let's just not pay them and we'll go back out to the bid and take our chances, my question is, in addition to tip rolling the dice that we're gonna get a, a, as good a better uh, bid, are we also exposing ourselves to some sort of um, uh, damages for breach of contract?
Yeah, potentially for non-performance of payment, they could terminate the agreement.
They could terminate it, but can they all, in, in sue us for damages as well?
Potentially.
Okay, so that's, I guess that would be my concern, Chris, with, with your option of just not paying them. My guess is it's gonna be a number potentially of, of towns going out to, doing similar problems, having similar issues, going out to bid in a hurry come September or August, approaching September, and that has the potential to be a real um, the term for that that I can't use, um, so I'm not sure we want to get in the middle of that, risk, risk going out to bid and getting a worse deal than what we have now, and then on top of it having Trombley sue us and, and potentially incur legal costs to defend and maybe pay some damages for breach of contract. I would prefer to either pay the seventy-eight percent or do the, do, at least do the reduction uh, in, in routes and then save a little bit off of that seventy-eight percent.
Uh, Tom, if you want to make a motion, you can.
Um, I'd rather hear what's up, are you, okay.
Right, Madam Chair.
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead, Steve.
When we were putting this contract out to bid, we had a consultant that we used, has he been involved in any of these conversations?
Uh, no, Mr. Nelson, our, our uh, our working consultant uh, ended with the awarding of the bid.
I mean, I'm just wondering what the bid climate might be if decided to do the reduction that Tom was discussing and going, I mean, gas prices have plummeted, I don't know if it, not just diesel fuel or gas fuel, but a lot of the contract price is based on the price of gasoline. I'm just wondering what the likelihood is that we'd get just as good a deal if we went back out to bid.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
And a comment, um, I am not in favor of, of uh, signing services and going back out bid, but I still don't understand what, I understand one of the choices is to create the seventy-eight percent that was negotiated. Um, I can't, this thing about if we reduce our, our routes, I want to know, well, if we did reduce the routes, would we be paying seventy-eight percent of that? And if we reduce the routes, are we allowed to just reduce and increase the routes anytime we want? So that in September, we would have all the routes we needed if we did that? Can anyone answer that?
Under the contract, the town does have the ability to reduce uh, routes up to a percent.
Right.
Uh, and, and if, if, if doing so, they, uh, the town is to provide uh, advance written notice. And again, I, I think it was covered earlier, the town did so, we, we did notify uh, the, the vendor by email that there is a, an issue here um, in light of what's going on. And I think that, again, there's a reduction payment due under the contract, at which time uh, once thirty days expires, then the contract is so reduced and therefore the, the town, um, the contract therefore is reduced accordingly, so, um.
We then increase it as needed in September if we, if, and who knows, we might not need it in September.
Right, the contract does allow for an increase in routes, just like it, it contemplates a decrease.
And you say we sent them an email, when did we send the email and when is the thirty days up?
Uh, Nicole, I'm not sure if you're on the, on the line here, but I know Nicole sent the email, I want to say it was.
It was last Monday.
Last Monday.
So it would be only starting the first week in June? And we only had two weeks left on the contract for June, or is it three weeks, is that correct?
Yeah, that would be correct.
If I, to the chair, if I may continue, I'm trying to understand this, because I know that Matt's repeated himself a couple times.
Yes.
But, so if we, this, an email does re- by our contract requirements for reducing our routes twenty-five percent, and then that reduction in our required payment starts the first week in June, um, there is, yes, to us, to then increase, you know, in, or decrease it if there's another second wave of virus and, you know, I think too, they didn't adjust in any way in terms of our contract and in terms of what Tom was saying, in terms of liability uh, in the future.
Martha, if I can just assume that, what, as you said, is that around June first, um, the, those routes would go away, so we, and then, and we needed the buses again, we would add routes back in and lose the reduction. Eric, go ahead.
Matt, the question I would have is, um, I understand the thirty days' notice. Um, if we were to do thirty, thirty days' notice and a route reduction based on, on Nicole's letter, um, that reduction might only be for the month of June, which might only be till June nineteenth, is what we're talking about. Can the route reduction be retroactive to um, March thirteenth, or could that be something we negotiate with the vendor? Can we go back in time?
Uh, it's, if I could, Madam Chair and three of the members, in response to Dr. Conti, I would say that it would be something that we would negotiate directly with Trombley.
Well, I, I don't think the route reduction, even at twenty-five percent, does much for us if they say uh, which they're gonna honor the thirty days' notice, because the school year is going to um, end at that point. So again, I'm, I'm sorry this is taking so much time, but it is relatively complex. If we could um, go back, um, and Matt, Nicole, and I will have a conversation. If we could look at a retroactive route reduction of twenty-five percent, so we get the benefit of the reduction back to uh, March thirteenth, Matt, when we close, um, if they would be amenable for that, um, that might be something that I think would sway the committee, because uh, Madam Chair, unless the committee has changed its mind that we will pay the seventy-eight percent at this point, um, I'm, I'm not sure it makes sense to um, belabor this and um, I don't even think it makes sense for us to reduce our routes twenty-five percent if we're only gonna get that reduction for, for, for five or ten days, five or six days. I'm not saying we wouldn't do that, but I'm just saying, please understand for the committee, if it's a forward-thinking reduction, then um, there's not much school left for us to reap the benefit of that reduction. Madam Chair?
Uh, yeah, Kristen wanted to speak.
Okay, I'll defer.
Uh, I just had those, the question that was answered about the thirty days when that starts, and would that, so if we reduced it, let's say worst case in June, could that thirty day fall into the fall if we don't start right back up? Or if we're only starting certain schools at that time? Or does it have to start over with the reduction?
Kristen, again, I'm, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we reduce the routes twenty-five percent, that would be the existing contract. So we'd start the fall with that reduction of twenty-five percent until we changed it again. So again, it would be up to us to change that, and I think that thirty days is just so we give the vendor thirty days' notice that we're either going to expand or contract uh, what he has to provide us, that's all. I'm just saying, I don't, I'm not sure, I read the contract that we can say, okay, we want a route reduction and we want it to go back to September. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure that that uh, that makes sense, because we've obviously used the routes up until March thirteenth. But I think that would be the uniqueness of this situation where we might need to approach Trombley. Um, and again, if they do honor a route reduction back to March thirteenth, when we officially stop using the buses, um, we can put a financial package together that, that may be amenable, might be the best deal uh, to maintain the contract um, and uh, get the committee to support it. So I, I think, Matt, I can't think of anything else um, at this point uh, to, to, uh, to do that. It's just, again, to Mr. Eiler, I, I don't think it's as simple as just making the twenty-five percent uh, route reduction unless they want to honor uh, that reduction going back to when they stopped providing service.
I completely agree with you, and I, I would just throw in uh, something Martha mentioned that we want to make sure of. I, I can't find a document right now, uh, but uh, the question is, is the, is the MOU where we negotiated seventy-eight percent, was that seventy-eight percent of whatever contract we happen to have? Or seventy-eight percent of the full contract? So in other words, if we reduce the rates in September, does that MOU supersede it and say, no, you're paying seventy-eight percent of the total, no matter what? Uh, or are they additive, so we, we should make sure we, we have that MOU written in a way that does make it additive, obviously. Otherwise, you know, twenty-five percent route reduction would be better than the seventy-eight percent. And gee, I agree with your point, Dr. Conti, it's unlikely we can go back in time.
Okay, Steve wanted to speak, Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yeah, I'm listening to the conversation tonight. I'm just not sure it's worth all the effort that, that we're asking the administration and town council to put into renegotiating a deal that a number of other communities have, have already reached. I mean, we're talking about seventy-eight percent, and it's a tough, it's a tough pill to swallow. But I think that the transportation company wants to maintain their workforce, and they've probably made a business decision that if they don't get seventy-eight percent, it's gonna be difficult for them to survive this whole situation. I do agree that we, we need to make sure that we take another look at it if we're not open in September. Uh, and so that the, if we reach an agreement on seventy-eight percent, maybe it's just for this fiscal year and we, we keep our options open going forward. But it just seems to me that we're gonna spend an awful lot of time and money and effort. We're gonna end up back where we are right now at the seventy-eight percent. Thank you.
Right, one other comment, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Tom.
Um, it's kind of along those lines, uh. I have no problem with um, trying to backdate a, 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 a route reduction to, to mid-March, I, no harm in asking there. My concern is if they say no, I think we gotta think hard about um, not paying at all. I just foresee there's, there's, there's only a limited amount of bus companies in the, in the state. And a whole bunch of towns are going through the same thing that we're going through. And if a bunch of them pull the plug on their, on their contract to save money for the balance of this fiscal year, it's gonna become a seller's market for these bus companies when the, when people are going out to bid in August for the, for next year's um, bus routes. There's, there's, there're potentially gonna be a whole bunch of towns trying to get a limited amount of, of bus companies to, to handle their own. But I, I just think there's a big risk in, in um, going back out to bid. That's, I, I just, I would hope that we don't take that step without having a, a discussion. Again, I, I'm curious to see how, how, how the stocks go to try to get the backdated route reduction. And if that's successful, my, my preference would be to, to take it and, and, and go forward with this company. But I just, I don't want to make a final decision or have a final decision made to, to walk away from this contract without at least one more chance to discuss it amongst the committee members.
Okay, um, Eric, could you, when, you know, I guess it's at the next meeting that brought this subject in, could you just um, do whatever you need to do and back with a recommendation, what you believe we should do, if you can take it from there?
May, May twenty-eighth, Matt, so uh, does that, that, that's the timeframe, the next meeting is May twenty-eighth.
Okay, but, but when you, when we have that meeting, tell us what you think to do, rather than an open, open discussion, because we could discuss it until it comes.
Okay, uh, again, ye- yes, Madam Chair, this, all this work was in response to the committee not supporting the seventy-eight percent that um, that was negotiated. So we will, we'll try to bring it down, i- if, if we can't, my recommendation may be to pay the seventy-eight percent um, at, at our next meeting.
Okay, that sounds like a plan.
So Matt, Matt will be in touch, thank you so much.
Thank you.
What's next?
Uh, let's turn it over to Darren, Darren is gonna give you a, uh, an abbreviated um, training, uh, believe it or not, on my, uh, there's a new superintendent evaluation process, uh, that's been pared, that's been uh, pared down a little bit, so um, we're already probably four-fifths of the way through the process. The last fifth being the summative um, evaluation, which is um, coming up at the uh, at the end of June. Um, I do have a public survey out, my intention, like always, is to close that out at the end of May, I'll give you all the results, so you'll have some uh, input from the community. Um, but Darren, there's been some language changes, is that correct? And uh, you wanted to review some of those changes, um, now?
Yeah, it, well, thank you, Eric, um, Eric told me I only have two and a half hours for this topic tonight, so I'll, I'll try to be quick now. Um, I, I'm gonna, like Eric said, uh, the, the, there's some changes, but they're not major as far, I mean, I don't think they're major compared to the date, last date, um, which completely redid the system, I think these are more subtle. Um, and uh, I'm gonna go through really just, I'm gonna focus for the most part on really the final step, which you're in the fifth stage, is the summative evaluation that Eric mentioned. Um, so I will, I, I, I sent sort of a much longer slideshow earlier today, but I'm gonna skip through a lot of that, really focus on the, the stage that you're at, is the uh, fifth step. So, um, I don't know, do the committee members have this slideshow or the uh, PowerPoint that I sent?
Uh, they do, but I can uh, project their, your presentation up on, you just tell me when you want to change slides.
Okay, you go all the way to the uh, slide number four. So uh, basically, the amendments changed um, some things, and it tried to streamline the process a bit, and what they call a more holistic approach. and it tried to streamline the process a bit and what they call a more holistic approach to the evaluation. So you're now down to a very slim twenty, uh, indicators you have to evaluate. So it's much, much, uh, more narrow, being somewhat facetious. But it is down from the thirty or forty indicators I previously had to evaluate, down to twenty. Um, other big change is student learning impact used to be one of the five goals or one of the five, uh, major factors that you had to evaluate. That has now been changed, so the, um, the student learning impact, the superintendent role, student learning impact is now just part of the overall assessment of, of instructional learning that will get in, instructional leadership will be no longer one of its separate, um, uh, one of, one of the, the separate, uh, actors. So really, the best way I could describe this is the, the goal of, I think, this new approach and the old approach is to really make it a, sort of goal set. And it allows the, the, the school committee and the superintendent to set, uh, four, five or six major goals. And you're going to evaluate it not only on the different factors that we're gonna talk about as performance, but really on how he is doing and how the superintendent is doing in achieving the goals that were set earlier in the process between the school committee and the superintendent. And that's really what the intent is, to have more of a goal, goal-oriented evaluation process. Not just, is Eric good at this, is Eric good at that? How is he doing specifically on the goals that were set? So as far as just highlighting some of the changes, as I said, there no longer is a separate assessment of student learning impact. This is, this allows the conversation about factors, impact happening simultaneously throughout the separate stages of the process. Um, and, you know, that's really, I think, the, the major changes we'll get in. Um, if you go to the next slide, uh, slide five, um, there used to be four, uh, four major standards that you evaluated. Five, there used to be five, now there are four. Instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, professional culture. So one thing that's different, and I, I noticed in the, the, um, last year's evaluation, you evaluated Eric on the twenty different indicators that make up these four categories. Um, you can do that again, but, uh, and, and you probably need to, I don't know if the address is already, but one of the things that they're recommending is you are allowed to focus on six or eight of those twenty indicators. So as you begin maybe next process, rather than score, uh, the superintendent on all twenty of these indicators, you may pick six or eight that are the focus of the school committee that are set at the beginning of the process. And now you're evaluating on those six data, eight indicators as opposed to the twenty. So if you can go to the next slide, slide six, um, I'm just gonna go really quickly. This is what instructional leadership standard is. Promotes learning and growth of students and staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes effective, uh, uh, effective teaching and learning, the central focus of schooling. Um, you can skip all the way in, when you go through this more slowly, you'll see these are the separate indicators that make up that. When you hit the form, if you use the same form as last year, you're gonna see a place to evaluate Eric on every one of these, curriculum indicator, corruption indicator, assessment indicator. Um, all the way down through, if you go to slide, um, nine, that is the new indicator that's been added, and that's student learning indicator. This used to be its own separate standard. Now just the six, it's one of the six standards in the instructional leadership standard. It demonstrate expected impact on student learning based on multiple measures of student learning growth achievement, including student progress and common assessments, statewide growth measures wherebell. This is its own standard, now it is simply one of, of the indicators makes up the instructional leadership. Um, they felt that it wasn't fair to, to basically take a look at the superintendent and judge twenty percent of his overall assessment on the impact of, of, of student learning because it's tough to correlate that. Um, go to the, uh, slide ten. The second standard is management and operation standard, won't read it, you can read it on your own. Um, the third standard, if you skip ahead to slide thirteen, is the family and community engagement standard. Now, let you also sort of read that yourself, but it's promoting the learning and growth of all students and the success of staff through effective partnership with families, community organizations, et cetera. And then if you skip ahead to, um, to slide fifteen, the fourth standard is the professional culture standard. promotes learning and growth of all students through, well, practice, expectations, and continuous learning. Again, those are the four standards that when you get to the summative evaluation and you fill out your individual ones, that they're all be part of a, 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 uh, comprehensive evaluation. Those are gonna be the four standards that are gonna be evaluated. Inside those four are gonna be the twenty indicators that you're gonna review and score Eric on, just like last year. Now, one thing to consider in the future, and I apologize, that wasn't part of the early discussions, you may have already decided this, is they are suggesting moving away from the twenty indicators, picking six or eight among the four categories and make more of a streamlined, uh, evaluation. Um, it's probably too late to do that if you haven't already discussed that because you're at the last stage of the process, but something to keep in mind if you haven't for next year. You're not, you're not having to look at twenty indicators, but a much less, uh, uh, you know, obviously a much more focused and streamlined based on what you as the committee feel to be the focus of the superintendent. Uh, you can go to slide eighteen. These are the five steps that you've gone through in the past in this year. Uh, the self-assessment, which is done at the beginning of the cycle, analysis, goal setting and plan development, which I know Eric has a, has a list of goals. Uh, I've seen that, the implementation of the plan. Fourth step, I believe you had a meeting in January, I apologize if I'm getting the date wrong, uh, is the mid-cycle goals review, whole review. And that doesn't mean that the school committee should be filling out a form then. What Eric did, and I, and if I have the date wrong, I do think it was in January, is Eric gave you an update at an open session on how he was progressing on each of the four goals that the committee and Eric had set, uh, for his evaluation process. And I know one of the things that has been, um, highlighted in recent changes is you can't change those goals, like the goals that you set at the beginning of the process are the goals that, um, that need to be the focus of the final evaluation. You can't add a goal in April, add a goal in March. So I know Eric indicated in January that he was, um, on task to accomplish all of the goals that were set. And there was a meeting at the end of January with us. Um, if you skip forward to, uh, slide twenty, that's where we are now. Grab this step of this evaluation cycle, what do you do from this point four? Okay, so the first thing that will, that should happen is Eric should be submitting an end of the cycle report to the school committee that talks about the progress he's made on each of the goals that were set. And I do note that the goals at the end of the process should be the same as what was identified. How he's performed on each of the four standards that I highlighted earlier. And also, um, as part of that, the impact on student learning with data, um, supporting the assessment. Um, the second part of the, of the step five is then each school committee member is gonna review the report in evidence prepared by the superintendent and any of the other information that he submit. Um, and he's also going to draft, but it'd be summative final report. That will be sort of his own self-assessment. Uh, you then are gonna do an assessment of the progress that he's made on his goals. You're gonna rate individually, uh, the superintendent's performance on each of the standards and rate superintendent's impact on student learning at all. Um, at that point, I believe the process that, that is gonna be done is that there'll either be a, it'll either be the chair of the committee or another member of the committee or, um, the committee could appoint somebody else to gather the individual evaluations. And then you're gonna create a comprehensive evaluation report is a compilation of each of the individual school committee members' own individual summative evaluation. Um, the fourth step is you're gonna have a meeting of the school committee in which you discuss this comprehensive evaluation. And you'll have a, a back and forth discussion with Eric. And that comprehensive evaluation will be, um, which is supposed to be based on the preponderance of, of individual evaluations, uh, will be his final evaluation. And that document will clearly, uh, be a public record. Uh, if you can move forward to slide twenty-four. Um, so, you know, just very quickly before we get into some of the open meetings. So the five-step evaluation cycle, it's supposed to, the, the reasons for it are so there's gonna be continuous improvement during the life of the cycle in that you're constantly, as a committee and superintendent, moving towards the goals that you set. Um, one thing that has changed is cause Eric is what they would call an experienced administrator, you've been doing this every year. You do have the ability under the new reg and the changes in two thousand seventeen to elect for Eric because of his experience, two-year cycle, where basically the five steps that we talked about, other than be done in a one-year period, they can be done over two years because of, uh, Eric's level of experience. So that's something, again, it doesn't have anything to do with what you're doing right now. And you begin this process with a very adamant now that even if you finish this evaluation on June twenty-ninth, you know, when the new year begins, they want you to begin right over again with step one, it was a continuous process. But you may opt for a two-year cycle next time, would still begin July or September of two thousand twenty, but the five steps will be spread out over two years instead of one year. That's something that the school committee needs to discuss, um, before they begin the next cycle, how long is it gonna? Um, if you can go to, uh, slide twenty-five, and a lot of you probably remember this from last year, you essentially evaluate superintendent in two ways. On his goal progress, it's a one to five rating with five being he exceeded goals that were set, uh, four being he met those goals, three being significant progress, two being some progress, and one being he didn't meet those goals at all. The, the beginning part of the evaluation, you're gonna be rating Eric on how he achieved his goals. Then comes the performance standard rate. Those are those twenty indicators that we talked, four standards made up of twenty, subset of twenty indicators. Um, you rate Eric on exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, and unsatisfied. Now, one thing that, uh, Desi always tries to stress, and I'm not sure, um, how much, uh, districts get it, I think. People don't like doing evaluations, just the nature sometimes. And they really stress that, like, if you are a beginning superintendent, you're expected to have needs improved. If you're a beginning superintendent, you should have no example. You get proficient rating, that means you're doing everything very well. The way Destiny has defined the standards, exemplary should be literally you feel the superintendent is at the top of his profession in that standard, that he is among the two or three very best Commonwealth messages. That's how they define exempl. Um, you know, I know school committees have sometimes a little trouble. You love your superintendent, you feel he or she has done a great job, you wanna give exemplaries. But the way exemplary is defined is, uh, is, is to really go to the, the you feel that he's the leader in the profession in, in, in that, in that area. So getting proficiency is a great evaluation. Um, needs improvement, especially when you're just beginning, is not unexpected either. But, um, you know, those, you can read, and I have the definitions, uh, in the next slide, I won't go through them. But, you know, if, while you're doing the evaluation, it wouldn't hurt for you to read it how Destiny has defined in the regulations every. Um, so I'm gonna skip ahead all the way to, uh, let's go to slide thirty-one. Um, again, just kind of reiterating, the individual school committees rate the superintendent's performance based on the standards. Members rate the progress or professional, this student learning and district improvement goals. Members rate the overall performance. Eric compiles the ratings and graphs them to the evaluation. Then the committee discusses it on, uh, website. So that obviously, because you are a public body, involves the open meeting. And there's been changes in the law over the last twenty years. Um, and there's no question now that that discussion has to ha- happen in open session of the, the, the composite evaluation. Um, the other thing that's very clear is the individual members of the school committee are not allowed to see that composite evaluation before the general public. So there's really one or two ways to accomplish. Either it is publicly posted on the website, everyone can see it on the same time, or you're gonna get evaluation at the open session, not in your packet beforehand, actually at the session, for the first time, you're gonna see the composite evaluation at that open session where you're gonna discuss it. And that, that resulted from, i- it was a case called Bolter, from about a year and a half ago, uh, the court was very clear. Um, what's less clear is what happens with the individual evaluation. What the law says is if those individual evaluations are used during the open session, uh, then they are public as well. There is disagreement among attorneys that, that all represent school districts and, and towns on what using in the open session means. Um, I'm of the opinion that if the individual evaluations are not referenced, there's no, Ms. Monaco doesn't pull hers out and say, well, here's what I said. And I don't know if you automatically have to turn over those individual evaluation. Other attorneys disagree with that. Positive valuation, which is made up of the individual evaluations, and when you're discussing that, um, that those, 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 those documents should be made. Uh, you know, I'm sort of of the belief that her, her air on the side of caution and just expect everything to be public. Uh, because ultimately, my opinion might not be the final word on the subject. It, it could be the supervisor of public record, o- or the court. So I think if everyone understands that documents are gonna be public, it's just a safer way to do it. But I do think there is, if, if those individual evaluations are not used meeting and not referenced meeting, do you think there's an argument to be with? Uh, there, you know, if you ask twenty attorneys, you probably depend saying I'm right and saying I'm wrong. Nation. Um, if you go to, uh, just slide thirty-four very quick, um, you know, obviously you wanna make sure that, uh, anything you put in the document is accurate. Uh, um, and you wanna make sure it reflects the, the performance. If, you know, Eric is taking ninety-eight days off this year to do whatever, and you say, give him a high rating on his presence during the school day and at the schools, well, that's not gonna, it's not, that's not gonna be based on accurate information. So you wanna make sure it's accurate and it reflects what actually has occurred, as you're not. Obviously, you're not there, right? This system is not perfect. And it requires more work than probably, uh, any school district has the ability to do perfect. Um, but, you know, your goal is to the best of your ability to provide an honest and accurate evaluation based on as much accurate information. And, um, you know, I know Eric is working to get you some documentation. And if you have questions or wanna see further documentation during the process, I think any one of the school committee members should feel free to reach out to Eric to, to ask Eric to provide that information. To ask Eric to provide that. As much as, 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 as much as you feel you need. Because, you know, that, that is the whole purpose here to give. Give an evaluation that's useful to Eric as well. So he can begin the next process, you know, this is not supposed to be a one and done process. It was right into the next cycle, it was begin right at the beginning of the next school year. And it helps for all of us to know what we're doing well. We could be doing better and sometimes better doesn't mean. Performing better from a quality standpoint, it could mean that you as the school committee have a certain vision for the district. And you may feel the superintendent's doing a great job, but that may be. It's not what you're looking for in a certain area. But that, this is the time to really get that and make sure that, that, that the superintendent has a great understanding of the direction you want him to move. So, I know it's been a long meeting, so I'll sort of wrap it up there. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks Darren. I think we can probably. Figure out most of what you said, but if there's anyone who has a question. All right.
I feel like it was very clear, it's Martha. I don't have a copy of that, is that something that other people receive?
No.
Right, so could we, could some, if you could share it with us, so if we wanted to refer back to it, we could.
Absolutely, I, I apologize, I thought that the members got that later this afternoon, that's, that's my mistake. I will forward, I'll forward a couple of things to you, I will forward what I just went over. I'll also forward, although it's not as important for the next few months, I'll forward sort of a fuller version as well, which I think will be useful. The committee is in the process next. And I also told Eric, I'm happy free of charge to come back in July. After you've completed this process, it will walk you through sort of the first force process, maybe the beginning, I'm happy for that.
All right, thanks Darren. No one else has any issue with this so far?
No, good job, John.
Yeah, thanks Darren, very helpful.
All right, have a good meeting and again, best of health to everybody.
Same to you.
Same to you.
Okay, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I'm going to, I'm going to push us along here now. Bob, the school building update. And again, I think Bob, you can just quickly talk about some of the work going on, we do have some maintenance projects happening, but the big event that we tried to communicate to the committee is we did have a. A failure in the high school's HVAC system that led to a significant amount of damage in the athletic area. So Bob, why don't you summarize that for the committee?
So I think Mark already stepped off the meeting, but I would give him credit. So Mark showed up to the school on Saturday morning and noticed that there was water leaking from the ceiling. I gave myself Eric and then maintenance crews a call. And what had happened is is a copper pipe had burst in one of the penthouses. And as we all know, water flows downhill. So that came through the ceiling and then downstairs to the gymnasium and to the. The girls locker room area and the wrestling room area. So it's a good news that Mark actually was in the building. Bad news is that there is a lot of damage. So again, we've had our crews in there vacuuming up and cleaning up the area. We've had a service master in, putting some blowers and dehumidifiers in there. And going back to ceiling just to kind of estimate some of the damage. And we have electrical shut off and water shut off in certain parts of the building. And tomorrow I'll be meeting with our insurance company. So they are up to speed as far as informationally what's going on, but it'll be the first time on site tomorrow to get a real sense of what happened.
So it looks like, just briefly, again, I'm not an expert, there are experts, but it looks like the vanilla gym, the wooden floor is, is ruined. So that's a significant, a significant expense. So I think Bob will get us a report at the May twenty-eighth meeting for specifics. I just wanted to reiterate that the HVAC system at the high school is not a topic that should be new to all of you. It is old, there's lots of different types of failures. Again, the boiler's not working is only one type of failure. This is another type of failure where the piping is, is older. And it, so it may be that the mechanical equipment doesn't work, but it is also the plumbing, we're starting to see plumbing failures as well. And that's going to lead to other issues. So I know Bob has to address the damage that's here and we need to move forward, which we will do. But we're also, again, in the process with the architect of moving forward with the, getting a true cost on the HVAC. System replacement at the high school because we are going to continue to see failures like this. Moving forward because the system is about forty-five years old or however old it is.
It's up, yeah.
So this is, again, this is not anyone's fault, it's just the, the pipes corroded and they, they sort of started leaking when. Bob said some water leaked, I don't want people to think it was like a drip. The entire wooden gym was underwater, so there was probably five or six inches of water. On the lower level of the school. Well, Bob, Francis Wyman, fire alarm and air conditioning?
So both of those projects are substantially done. And what that means is that the contractors have removed most of their crews. And we basically have a punch list of items. Part of it means for the fire alarm meeting with the fire department, obviously running some tests on that. Air conditioners have been turned on. So again, it's really meeting with our engineer to be onsite with myself to make sure that all elements of the bid were, were completed. And that everything turns on and works as is supposed to and then signed off on that. So that's the stage where we're at right now, the crews are not in the building working anymore. We're really just scheduling up those finalized meetings.
And again, the final thing for the committee and Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I'm just pushing through, we will answer any questions the committee has, is. Our summer, our summer cleaning schedule. We're obviously waiting for direction from the state, from the governor's office about a phased-in reopening of some public buildings. Again, as of right now, the, the buildings are still, are still closed. But if they open up the, if the state opens up the buildings, then Bob will work with the custodians to try to accelerate that cleaning schedule or at least to get a jump on the cleaning schedule in, in June without the kids in the building.
Okay. Is there anything else to be discussed, any comments, that can we move on? Still have a bunch of things to do. Okay, Eric, what?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to, there was a question in our last meeting about the employee compensation through June thirtieth. And I did some research because initially the governor closed schools through May fourth and then secondarily extended that through the end of the year. And I think it was, it was, it was a good comment, but I went back and looked at the motion and I just wanted to restate that the motion didn't say through March fourth. The actual motion, and I'll read it, it was moved by Mrs. Monaco, seconded by Mrs. Russo, that for the duration of the Burlington Public Schools school closing commencing Friday, March thirteenth, the school committee authorizes that subject to appropriation, regular wages will continue to be paid to employees, including those not covered by a collective bargaining agreement and non-exempt employees. And the motion carried three zero one. So again, to the comments during, public comments that I don't believe we need a vote to extend. I think the motion language does take us through the duration of the closure. We may want to talk in the new fiscal year, if the committee has a, a, a change to that or if they want to make a change. Then I think that would warrant another promotion. But if the committee's opinion sort of hasn't changed and the closure continues, I believe your current motion language allows us to continue forward without taking another vote, Madam Chair. So again, that's what I would say, but I just wanted to, I wanted to restate that and, and just make sure that we reiterated that the continuation of motion was for the duration of the school's closing.
Yes, and the only motion that would be in order is a motion to reconsider and I don't think there's anyone that's stopped paying that teachers. So we're good with that one.
And, and, and again, well, we can revisit again if we need to afterwards. The final things on the agenda this evening or, and I'm going to pull one of them, are the ratifications of the instructional assistant contract. Darren included a memorandum of agreement for the committee. The instructional assistant contract, again, Patrick did. Most of the work with the instructional assistants. This contract was actually agreed to and settled prior to the closing, which is why it's a three-year, a three-year contract. Honestly, we probably should have gotten it to you ahead of now and that's my fault. We just, we're dealing with some, some other issues. So we'd like to bring that to you now, that's the instructional assistant contract. The clerical union contract, because it occurred after the closing. We're following the model of the MOA for the unit A for the teachers, which is just a no changes in working conditions and a two and a half percent for one year. And then we'll, we, we had some open working condition conversations that were happening and we'll continue those next year moving forward. So that's why the clerical contract is, is one year. And then Unit D, I just have some more work to do, I didn't finish prior to tonight, so I'm going to pull that. So I just, I would like votes on G and H, Madam Chair.
Okay, is, is someone on the committee who would like to make a motion to approve three-year contract, the instructional assistant?
I'd like to move that we approve the three-year contract for the instructional assistant.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all those favor Miss Simon?
Aye.
Miss Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry, I abstain.
On instructional assistance? Okay. And Simon, Miss Monaco votes aye. So it's three zero two. For motion to ratify the clerical union contract for one year?
No move.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion, hearing none, Miss Simon?
Aye.
Miss Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Monica votes aye. That has been approved, five zero. Clerical union is done, Unit D is not ready, is that all of it, Eric?
That's all of it, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there anything else before the committee?
No, I want to thank the committee again, I just want to restate a couple of things that. The extended school year services, we're planning on being remote and where unless we hear otherwise from the state, Mrs. Monaco, we said we would sort of keep the door open, but it's a very slim chance that we're going to be offering in-person services this summer. Both with summer school and extended, extended year. Report cards, again, we're not planning on issuing report cards at the preschool, elementary or middle school level. We will be issuing a, a fall report on students once we sort of get a, we're going to do a screening, as is our typical practice. Depending on what we look like in the fall, but we will, we will get a good picture of where students are and where we have to pick up our instruction. The celebrations and culminating activities, I think Mark explained and I support. We'd like to convey diplomas during early June. We will have other opportunities to celebrate in August and even into the fall. So I think we'll, we're going to be trying to cover all bases there. We're going to be putting out some guidance for the elementary in the middle. Again, my understanding is that eighth grade parents met with Kerry Purchase and they're working on something. And what we're trying to ensure at the elementary level is that there's an equitable experience across all four schools. So we're going to be putting out some, some guidance there. And it may be that we have to delay some of these recognitions until the fall for, for fifth graders, if that's what we choose to do. I was directed by the committee to pay out of district tuition, so I'll work with the town to, to do that. We also established, again, reiterated, restated that the last day of, official last day of school is going to be Friday, June nineteenth. And again, I informed the committee that our last day of remote learning is going to be Friday, June twelfth. And we're going to be working on transition activities for that, for that week following. Again, the May twenty-eighth agenda will give you a firm recommendation on the transportation contract. We discussed that. We will. And we'll be working on for the first meeting in June, some of the financial areas where we think we're not going to spend as much money. And we will probably reflect other areas where we're spending more money. And to the Ways and Means Committee members that are here, the, the bottom line, I think, still looks healthy going into, going into year end. But we'll try to make that analysis a little bit more granular as we, as we come up into June. So I just want to make sure, did I miss anything? And then Sharon will work on the May twenty-eighth agenda. If any committee members have items that they'd like us to add, please get that to Sharon and we'll, we'll try to put it on.
I, I just have one thing I wanted to say, I know there was a change in the. Online learning this week. And I know that. Working great for some kids and there is some others that have like added after the first hour. And I understand and I, I know some of the parents pulling their hair out. And on the other hand, some of them think it's great, so this is a really crying time, we're all doing our best. Try not to let the stress of the remote learning ruin your day or get on your nerves. Because everyone's going through the same thing and we just have to get through it. So my six-year-old grandson, quick kindergarten, right about now, but I think we're going to talk, I'm going to stick it out. If there's. Eric has disappeared from my screen, are you there?
Madam Chair, I'm here, that's, that's all I have. So again, I want to thank the committee and I know these, the conversations can be difficult online.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's a lot, especially. But I want to thank everyone, teachers, staff, everyone for all their efforts. They're doing, everyone's doing their best and it's bringing out the best of us.
Chris, one, one last.
Yeah, Steve.
I, I just wanted to recognize, we've been recognizing all of the teachers, they're doing a tremendous amount of work and I know that. I know at least one who's doing ten, twelve hours a day, so they're doing phenomenal work. But we should also recognize our, I think, our secretary, who, Sharon Gilbert, who's doing a phenomenal job. She's compiles probably the best minutes that I've ever seen, I've been looking at minutes of my whole career and she does a phenomenal job. And I just wanted to thank Sharon for her hard work and keeping us on schedule and on task remotely during this time.
Yes, thank you Sharon, you are the best. Is there anything else to come before the committee or are we ready to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Moved and seconded, adjourn, Miss Simon?
Aye.
Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Monaco votes aye, good night everyone.
Good night, thank you.
Night all.